One.
Good evening and welcome to the 17th meeting of fiscal year 2021 for the Milton Planning Board. My name is April Anderson. I'm the Chair of the Board, and we'll introduce the rest of the Board members now. Denny?
Denny Swenson, Secretary.
Kathleen?
Kathleen O'Donnell, Member.
Cheryl?
Cheryl Taguayas, Member.
Rich?
Rich Beeler, Member.
Great, and then our staff, Tim?
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Allison?
Allison Quinn, Assistant Planner.
Great, and Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Thank you all for joining us tonight. We are casting this meeting, hosting this meeting via Zoom per the Governor's Executive Order in response to the novel coronavirus outbreak emergency. For those who wish to join, the Zoom password and meeting ID are on the agenda for this meeting. And the first item of business here is just some administrative tasks for us to be care of. We meet again as a board next Thursday, April 15th at 7:00 PM, just as a reminder for everybody. And then we have a public hearing on April 26th, also at 7:00 PM. We have some minutes to approve, I think, Denny?
I guess, March 25th, 2021, I saw no amendments. Is that correct, everyone?
That is, I saw them, they're fine.
Okay, so I would like to move to approve, March 25th, 2021, without amendments. Second.
Great. Just checking to make sure that wasn't the meeting I missed. I don't think so. Okay.
Oh, no, you came in. You were good. You were on this one.
Yes, yes.
Is that the meeting I missed?
Yes.
I think so, Rich.
Okay.
Yes. So let's take a roll call vote. Denny Swenson?
Yes.
Kathleen O'Donnell?
Yes.
Cheryl Taguayas?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
I'm staying then, if I wasn't there.
April Anderson. Thank you very much. And now I'll turn it over to Tim for the staff update.
Thank you, April. A couple, a couple things. There's a few things that we usually talk about my staff update that we actually have on the agenda, so I'll save those for a bit later. Couple of, teeing up some issues that we'll need to talk about next week, and it's kind of a two steps forward, one step back, or whatever situation on a couple of issues. On Eight Parkwood Drive, the tree issue. This is all very complicated, unfortunately. So, as you're all aware, there's a $12,000 declining surety bond for the, ensuring the survival of the trees on the town lands that were taken down during the building of the Eight Parkwood Drive project. And this is something the Board's been dealing with for quite some time, since 2018, I believe. The, that declining surety bond was designed to sort of decline every year in $4,000 increments. The final sort of declining deadline is in May of 2021. So, two of those $8,000 checks have been returned to Mr. Caneely, the developer, as per the understanding of the nature of that declining surety. And so, we had, we had met with Carol Stocker, who kind of represents a group of volunteers on Hillside Street that have been looking after those trees and have a very strong interest in that piece of town land. And she had proposed to this Board that the remainder of that declining surety in the amount of $300, $3,990 be spent towards mulch and weeding as sort of a kind of last hurrah for that land, as it goes into sort of a, you know, a natural state. And that was a plan that the Board approved. So I've been working with the new town accountant and the town treasurer about, you know, sort of how, what the mechanics of that would look like in terms of getting a cashier's check into a liquid form that Carol and her group can use. The town accountant, Karen Praval, who is very fastidious and very great, asked me to, you know, confirm with Mr. Caneely that, in fact, his understanding of this issue was that, you know, he's received $8,000 checks. The final check is going to be spent on this, and everyone agrees, and everything's fine. And we've got that in our record in case there's any issue coming up. He does not agree that that is a valid use for that final $4,000 check. And I think, you know, we'll have to talk about this in greater detail next week. This isn't an item that's on the agenda, and I think it is going to take a fair amount of discussion. Suffice it to say that it kind of all kind of stems back to the fact that there is no real formal documentation of this issue, aside from, you know, a couple of emails that have gone back and forth, a memo from the Assistant Town Planner, kind of, you know, just laying out the timeline of events, and, you know, the minutes from the relevant meetings. And so, we'll talk about it next week. Suffice it to say that it is a problem, and I have spoken with Town Council about it. And Town Council does agree that it's a little bit of a pickle that we're in. So, I'll lay out those details in a little more specificity next week. Suffice it to say that, you know, well, it's, I thought this was a slam dunk sort of thing, and it's the opposite. It's, it's not. And so, you know, we can talk about it next week, and, you know, if you have any questions in the interim, you know, we can chat offline, but just wanted to sort of tee up that issue for next week. The other one is related to one of the zoning articles that is going to town meeting in May. We have, you know, we've recently been in conversation with the Warrant Committee on kind of the final, the final charge towards getting the warrant printed and together and ready to go out for annual town meeting. And in the course of reviewing those articles, I did have a conversation with Joe Prondak, the Building Commissioner, and he noticed something in, in the tree bylaw, for lack of a better term. This is our proposed amendments to the earth materials cut and fill bylaw. And basically, and Cheryl and Denny are familiar with this because they've been involved in this conversation. You know, when this, when this article was first conceived in, sorry, I got an, I got an email from Town Council. I'm going to have to send him the Zoom link. Remind me to do that when I'm done. When we first sort of conceived of these amendments, I think there was, everyone kind of has an interest in this bylaw. Denny has been sort of the champion of the trees, and Cheryl's been the champion of the earth, and, you know, the Building Commissioner, you know, has a lot of kind of opinions about it. And at the time, we had been, we were between town engineers, and so we kind of all kind of came to an agreement that, you know, the tree amendments, the tree protection amendments were relatively circumscribed and limited in their scope, and we're probably fine to go forward. And then, once we had a town engineer in place, we would all kind of reconvene and kind of discuss a more wholesale change to the bylaw. And so, this is kind of the lens through which the Building Commissioner had been viewing this amendment, is that, you know, it's all kind of in the context of the existing special permit process. It just sort of adds additional requirements to the special permit kind of submission, but not necessarily new triggers for the special permit, I guess is the way that he was understanding it. And so, there's one amendment, the final amendment is to subsection five. And Denny's familiar with this because we've had a conversation, and again, we'll have to talk about this in more detail next week. Suffice it to say that the Building Commissioner approached me and basically said, you know, look, the amendment to subsection five, which deals with kind of exemptions to the bylaw, would in fact actually add a lot more projects to projects that kind of cross the threshold of needing to apply for a special permit at the Board of Appeals. His opinion is that the way it's been drafted would really kind of create a situation where, A, you know, he was exercising discretion that he needed probably more guidance on, and B, you know, would be adding cases to the Board of Appeals workload in ways that I think he initially hadn't intended, and perhaps, you know, we can talk about it next week, but we can, we can talk about whether or not, you know, this Board intended that. But the upshot of all of this is that, you know, on kind of a closer examination, I think he feels that at least that subsection kind of needs a little bit more thought and a little more consideration of kind of what the implications would be for both his office and for the Board of Appeals. And so, that'll just have to be something that the Planning Board kind of needs to figure out, you know, how it wants to approach that. It's on the warrant. You know, we didn't propose any changes because it seemed relatively substantive to do without actually talking to the Planning Board first. And so, you know, that'll have to be something that we discuss together. And, you know, there are a range of options, but I think, you know, again, it's a little bit unfortunate. You know, on the one hand, you know, we have been talking about this for quite some time, but I do want to sort of be fair to the Building Commissioner, you know, because the, the nature of the conversation that we've been having about this product, about this amendment has been kind of its limited kind of scope. And I think he just maybe wasn't looking, you know, in a frame of mind for kind of bigger changes for that. Denny, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know if, Tim, you had seen, I had suggested a potential solution to, for Joe. It was early this morning, so I don't know if it started at 7:30.
I did. I haven't passed that along to him. I'm going to do that next week. You know, just to kind of see if that's something that he would be interested in. You know, I'll bring that back to the Board next week as part of that conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Denny, I asked Tim, Tim filled me in on this in our update for this meeting, and I asked him to just brief the Board so that everybody knew the conversation that was happening. And then, if he could explore perhaps with you whether or not there's a solution to this, or kind of chart a course forward for next week's, with a recommendation. So the Board can kind of discuss it next week, if that's okay with you.
Yeah, that's great. I'm hoping that, I do think we can come to some, I'm hoping Tim and I can work with Joe and come, come up with a couple of ideas. And hopefully, it will be in keeping with our, the spirit of our goals, so.
Well, did you have something?
Yeah, I do, now that we do have a new town engineer, and that Tim mentioned that I would like to restart that conversation with the new town engineer. I did note that I watched the 582 Blue Hill Lab Board of Appeal hearing last night, and they went through the waiver list, and one of the things on the list was this section of the bylaw. And the Chair of that Board is asking the applicant to be very specific and show the analysis of where they don't meet particular provisions in the bylaw. So I would love for us to get our revisions in so that the cut and fill aspect of that gets included in that analysis, because these, that 582 Blue Hill Lab has significant fill. And with their new proposal, I think they have more cut as well. And 648 Canton Avenue has plenty of cut. I don't think they have the fill issues. But it would be good that the 40B applicants would have to address the same kind of issue. So, if I could put that request to you, Tim, to, if we can restart that, I think, Denny, if you're interested in that too.
Sure.
Yeah, I will, I'm emailing myself as, as we speak. I'm actually, I'm out of the office tomorrow, but I'll get to all of this on Monday morning. The, the other thing, and this is, I'm losing my train of thought. Meeting before town meeting. I'm just going to, I'm just going to read off the notepad that I have. So Hillary Waite from the Select Board Office has been trying to arrange all of the various Zoom credentials that are necessary for Boards that want to meet prior to town meeting. And so, Julia, is this a thing that we have to decide on tonight, or can we think about it and decide next week?
We can, we can decide next week. We're just, Hillary's waiting on us. So it would be helpful to her if we had, if we just, she just knew if you guys wanted to meet before town meeting or not.
So do you want to meet before town meeting?
I have a question. Do we have any updates from the Warrant Committee on the zoning articles? So usually, there might, sometimes there might be concerns that get raised in that we discuss right before town meeting on zoning articles.
I have not heard anything from the Warrant Committee specifically about our articles.
They heard all of our articles, and they voted to support them and didn't have any outstanding issues.
Okay.
Could potentially change with this tree bylaw issue, so. Can, if we can wait till next week, we'll know more of what our plan of attack is with the tree bylaw. And if there's going to be a change in course that needs to go to the Warrant Committee that we might need to discuss, then we can schedule a meeting before the meeting. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah, so Julie, if you could just convey, you know, and I think, you know, for the first day or so of town meeting, I don't anticipate that we'll get to the zoning article, so there may not be, I mean, it could be, I mean, you know, when we used to do this in person, you know, the plan where we'd just have a room, and you either use it or don't use it. So my, you know, my question, and we can bring this back to Hillary, you know, is like, is it a burden to just reserve a Zoom space for us? In which case, I don't think there's any harm in just doing that, or if it creates a problem, then maybe you want to be a little bit more targeted in when you think you're going to want to meet. So, we can, we can follow up on that with Hillary tomorrow.
Excuse me, but are we going to have to do what we did before, meet in person at the Council for Aging? In case there's some issues that come up on the floor?
I don't know. I mean, I, so, I mean, that was, what was, what was that a solution to? Because I know, like, some people are concerned about, you know, communication via text or email, and being in person kind of obviates the need for those kind of questionable, I don't know. I don't know what the virtue of that was.
My opinion about that was, we had a pretty big zoning bylaw with the Milton Village that faced any number of edits or discussions or proposed amendments. So I think that's why, we also had a couple of other articles too. I don't know that we had anything of a great deal of controversy this time that would warrant it, but I'm not even going to be on the Board at that time. So it's really up to you guys. You'll have your new member by then.
I think we do need a means to communicate with one another if there is something that comes up related to the zoning articles. So I know.
We had a text chain last time, the last few.
Yeah.
Which I believe was by our Town Council as appropriate mechanism for communication, as long as someone could access it via Freedom of Information Act, so we would have to keep of any correspondence. We never, I don't think we ever even executed any discussion. We just had it set up just in case. So maybe that's.
Yeah, I think we should have a Zoom room. What do you think?
Yeah, I don't know if we can have a Zoom room within the Zoom. I think we can do some other format, like Microsoft Teams or Google Meet or something.
Yeah, I was, I was going to suggest, I mean, we have support for Microsoft Teams. That, that's something where like that transcript can, can be preserved. That may be an effective way of just sort of having that open, and it works just like, you know, a chat room or an instant messenger or whatever. So that, that may be an alternative. I mean, I, you know, I, text is probably fine. I just, I get squished out thinking about someone looking at my phone and.
I think, I think last year when we did the training, when getting ready for the virtual town meeting, the organizers of the training had suggested these other formats. You know, like, like I just said, Microsoft Teams or Google Meet or something, because it, it gives you the opportunity to have a sidebar conversation like we would in person. So if Microsoft Teams works best for the, because the town has access to that, that's fine with me. I do think there could be somebody who might put an amendment forward on maybe the ADU bylaw. I have no reason to predict it, but it's just, it's the kind of bylaw that might generate something. So I just think we might want, need to be prepared to make a decision about whether we accept it or not, or support it or not.
I think you're right. Does anybody know what day the Warrant Meeting is going to be? Or Committee, I mean, not the Warrant Committee, I'm sorry, Town Meeting. I'm sorry, Town Meeting.
First Monday of May.
Yeah, first Monday in May.
May 3rd.
May 3rd, okay. Wow, it's coming right up, okay.
All right, so that settles up for now. Tim, did you have anything more, or Allison?
Um, I've spoken enough, Allison. I don't know if you have. Allison's been working on some interesting things, if you maybe want to really quickly run through some of the stuff you've been working on.
Sure, absolutely. I'd be happy to. So I've been working with the Master Plan Implementation Committee, Cheryl can attest to. We've been looking at the townwide inventory that we completed that breaks down all of the different restrictions and all of the different parcels that the town holds. We've been, we had a great meeting with Steve Ives and John Kieran of the CONCOM Conservation Commission. And they helped us really think through some of the parcels to understand which parcels would be most viable, should we want to move forward with an RFP. And I presented a couple of parcels based on that information to Parks and Rec to get some feedback from them. And I think we're in a, we're in a position now where we're going to at least take a hard look at a couple of these parcels. So that was exciting. And the second piece is I am working on creating a guide for our inclusionary units. So any of our affordable housing requirements. Recently, we were able to review via Zoom Jack Dolly's two, two of the six units that he, he's owed to the, that he owes up the town. And one thing kind of jumped out at me was that we don't really have a way to think about, or, you know, like, across the board way to measure what it is that we want and how these units, what we, what we want them to look like, what, you know, what our expectations are. Is it a new roof? Are the mechanicals up to date? So I'm working on a guide and kind of like a checklist, so when we go to look at these, we know what we're looking for, and we know how to ask for things that we feel might be subpar. So those are two of the big things I'm looking at. Cheryl, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to add to your MPIC update is that the committee discussed the proposed amendments to the accessory dwelling unit bylaw and took a vote in support of those amendments. And so, I just thought we should, the Planning Board should be aware of that. And in our presentation to Town Meeting, we may want to note that.
So they suggested additional, like, floor amendments?
No, they voted in support of the amendments that, that we're making, I guess, or we could call our ADU bylaw.
Yes.
I think of it as amendments, but.
Yes, 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 you're correct. Okay.
And I'll leave you with, I have a, we're having a site walk, myself, Chase Berkeley, Marina Hernandez, and Mike Duddy tomorrow, down at Milton Landing with DCR to look at that space collectively. And I will report back.
Great. Julia, did you have anything for us for the staff update?
Not that I can think of.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll move into Citizen Speak. And actually, before we start Citizen Speak, I just want to remind everybody, we have a presentation coming from Judy Barrett, who I see here. And then we have an executive session, so the meeting is going to be a little bit choppy just because we have an executive session that we have to get to after our presentation. And then we'll come back after the executive session for some more formal business from our agenda. But let's open it up to Citizen Speak. We have very few attendees. If you have something you would like to say, please raise your hand, and you can be recognized. And I see no hands raised. One more second. Okay, then I think what we will do now is we will turn it over to Judy Barrett of Barrett Planning Group, who completed the East Milton Working Group Study for, or the East Milton Study for us. And ran the East Milton Working Group. Thank you, Judy, for being here.
This time I'll remember to unmute myself. I'm so good at putting it on mute, I sometimes forget to turn it on when I need to speak. I just want to kind of bring a couple of slides up. I know you have the report. I'm not going to walk through everything that's in it. But I did want to focus on, I think, some of the, some of the kind of highlight recommendations that are in it and the rationale for them, if that would be helpful to the Board.
Sure. And I mean, just to remind anybody who's watching, we did have a fuller presentation that the Planning, but the full Planning Board participated in, but it was hosted by, I think, the East Milton Working Group Session, or maybe the Planning Department, I'm not sure. But that is also available on Milton Access TV. I don't suppose you know the date of that, anybody, Tim, or?
Was it the third week in January?
Third week in January, okay.
I think it was.
Check out the fuller presentation. We can maybe look up the date of that while Judy's talking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So there's a lot in the report that I, I don't want to try to delve too much into, because we could probably spend a long time on this, but I do want to talk about the highlights. And so, before I jump into the zoning piece, because I think that may be what you folks are particularly interested in. First of all, I want to tell you that when the Board invited people to participate in the Working Group back in, I think it was January or February, it was before COVID. And we had all these people respond, and April put all these people on the Committee. I said, oh my God, what are we going to do? And it was the best thing that could have happened, because we ended up hearing things from people that we had not heard. And I was not the one who, who had the idea to open the Committee. It was actually Peter Flinker from Dodson and Flinker, who said, when I go into situations like this in a town where there's a lot of disagreement, I think it's great to just ask anybody who wants to talk to come and work around the table, and we'll talk about some maps, and people, see what people think. And he was right, and April was right. And so, we benefited enormously from opening that Committee up. Now, you know, that said, I also want to be clear that in part because of what had happened before the Committee was opened up. And in part because by the time we really were able to work with the Committee, everyone knew that a 40B was coming from Corcoran and Falcone. That really did make the conversation more complicated. And so, there are things that people agreed to as part of this process, and things that are really what we call lingering questions. And so there are things that people agreed to as part of this process and things that are really what we call lingering questions. I think that generally there was an understanding that the existing zoning doesn't make any sense. And that, that people would like to see something that's sort of transformative for that area. But interestingly, when you look at the report that we gave you, you will see that although for the most part, what people really preferred in visual terms are kind of lower scale buildings. The amenities that they want are all things that are not attainable with that kind of low density development. That if you really want to have amenities in a business or mixed use area, you have to allow development because that's what's going to pay for it. So there is this, I think, you know, I, I, I won't even call it a disconnect. I think it's just something people are going to have to grapple with that. When you want public amenities, they come from somewhere. The money comes from somewhere. And of course, fortunately, you know, when communities start to really upzone and think about ways to encourage or to unlock the development potential of land, they become a lot more competitive for some kinds of grants that can help to pay for some of those public amenities. But you know, that's sort of far afield into the implementation of this. But I want to talk specifically about the zoning because there was quite a bit of agreement and then some disagreement about the things that we talked about. We, in the end, kind of had to come through as planners and say, we know there are some things people don't agree about, but we have to tell you as planners what we think makes sense. And that's what we did in this report. So this is just an image of kind of how we think. Can you all see this, by the way? You can all see this map right?
Yes.
So this is kind of an image of how we see the possibility for a different type of zoning in this area. And I think no surprise to you. It is in response in part to the fact that, um, excuse me, there. It's in, it's in response to the fact that the way you have your zoning now, which is this boundary, your business district, but you actually have this land use pattern that's different. And so in some ways, the zoning that's there now doesn't kind of relate to what has happened organically over time. And that's something that needs to be looked at. But if you can kind of see, these are sort of the, you know, the districts and the uses that you have, and this is the zoning and there's, so there's a more of an activity area here where the possibility for investment exists. That is why we talked about this kind of map. And this kind of zoning is achievable in a couple of different ways. But essentially what we're saying here is there's this core and that's what you probably want to build up more. You have a gateway area that, that would be a different kind of zoning and then sort of gradually working out into a mixed use transitional area where the development pattern would not be quite as intense, but there would still be opportunities for a greater mix of housing. And then moving out from there into your traditional residential zones. So that was the sort of framework that we talked about. We think there's a lot of work to do still on this. No surprise, I think, to any of you. I think you do need to have a, either the master plan implementation committee or an advisory group to that group or, or an approach kind of like what you use with Milton Village to sort of continue to work on this and work out if you can, areas where there are still these lingering questions, chief among which is building height. And we have a recommendation about building height in these different sub-districts that, that not everybody will agree with, but we think that they make sense from a planning point of view. And I'll, I'll get to that because I'm going to show the standards we're thinking about in a few minutes. And then we have a, in the plan and the report rather, as you know, there is a vision statement that went through multiple iterations with the committee. We went through probably three or four meetings with them around what that vision actually would be. And we sort of beat up on that as meetings went on and eventually ended up with a vision statement that a majority of the folks who were participating, which was not everybody. You know, over time, people do tend to drop off these things. And I will just say sadly, we lost early on one of the new members to the working group who backed, who, who decided not to participate because she felt from what she was hearing that there really was no interest or understanding about the plight of renters who live in East Milton and an understanding of, of their needs. And so rather than get into an argument with people, she decided to back off. So that was kind of sad. And so we didn't have her benefit, the benefit of her perspective on this vision statement, but the people who really stayed with it did ultimately say they thought this was, this was fine. And, and then, so now thinking about what the zoning would be, you know, as a planner, I'm worn out on overlay districts. I actually don't like them at all. I, I can see Cheryl smiling at me. It's just like, I'm just tired of them. I've seen so much confusion with overlay districts, but some communities like them and it's fine. I think whatever is going to work for you is what you need to do. But we're basically, what we're saying is whether you do a new district to replace what's there or an overlay, think about a district that isn't kind of one thing, but rather an area that's a planning area that has those sort of mixed use components that, that sort of are intensive and gradually work to a less intensive pattern. Incorporating the existing businesses so they can have room to grow is just to me, basic planning sense. Thinking about the use of sub-districts to have sort of a creative approach to form in that area. Thinking about building and site standards that really kind of don't exist in your zoning right now in that area at all. When you think about height, it makes sense to have more height and kind of the core of the, the center of the square area. And then, as I said, gradually kind of dropping that height down. Parking, you know, every town I work in, every town I work in, I don't care if it's a hamlet in Berkshire County or Milton. Everybody says there's not enough parking and everybody says there's too much traffic and both are probably true. But, but it doesn't, it doesn't help investment to impose on every single individual landowner a parking requirement that they probably can't meet. And you have a situation in East Milton where frankly, if you want to really encourage some new investment there, you need to rethink your parking policies. And it also is an area where if that's kind of your major business district and that's where you want to have a real activity center, there's going to have to be some public involvement in how the parking issues there are resolved. So our sense as planners is frankly, in an area like that, the market solution is to simply eliminate parking requirements and let the market sort it out. That's a very unpopular position, but as planners, we feel like we need to suggest it. I, I mean, it's good not only for, for overall encouraging how people get around, but also making an area that's more walkable for people who, who are there, who live there. Thinking about allowing mixed use on a site plan approval basis rather than a special permit. So in addition to planners being worn out on overlay districts, we're also not fans of special permits much anymore, but thinking about the ways to use site plan approval, I, I find in a lot of the towns I work in, because I do so much zoning work, that people still think somehow you can't, you can't exercise control or, or, or influence really much through the site plan review process. What happens with the development? And it simply isn't true. There are certainly opportunities, if your zoning is written properly, to be able to incorporate design review as part of your site plan review process. So I, I just think that's kind of something you, you guys are going to want to think about is how do you then make the permitting vehicle achieve what your zoning says it wants? When zoning says we want stuff, but then we make it impossible for you to give it to us, you don't get it. Enforcement is going to be part of whatever happens in that area in terms of, of traffic and, and parking. What we heard repeatedly from, from folks, and certainly it's documented in other work that's been done, is that parking enforcement in that area is an issue. Again, it doesn't make sense to require every single property owner to provide some, some parking on site in an area like that, especially where you want to have a walkable area. You can't have both, right? But at very least, the town should be doing something consistently and enforcefully to enforce the parking requirements that you have and thinking about revisiting those parking requirements anyway. Thinking about the ways that communities are doing effective parking management. Tiered parking, paid parking, fee and lieu has become an increasingly chosen option for communities that are trying to allow properties in a district to redevelop that instead of requiring retail to provide, you know, one space for 350 square feet, we'll say, well, if you can't actually do that on your property, you could pay into this off-street parking, this off-street parking fund. And towns are using those resources to, to supplement capital improvement grants to provide public parking. They're using it to buy easements over existing parking and lots that are underutilized. So there are options for you to think about doing something other than requiring parking of every applicant. And then, you know, thinking about ways in which, you know, parking and, and public realm improvements as part of development can increase the walkability of that neighborhood. We think that just based on things that we heard from folks, especially in the second round of the working group, that there's conversation that needs to happen in Milton. I know it's happening now. We think it's going to need to continue around what the town's role and responsibility is in addressing inequity. And how do you provide for social equity through housing and other means in an area like this as you think about how you want to encourage investment and development in it? So a better, perhaps closer conversation between your affordable housing committee, which has some pretty talented people on it, and the master plan implementation committee would probably be a good thing to, to think about. How do you get those voices to speak to each other? Thinking about ways in which you can integrate sustainability into, into your policies. You know, about a year ago, I did a study for the town of Dedham on their mixed use developments. And, and I was delighted when I participated in a meeting one day with some of the town staff where I discovered that one of the strongest advocates for those mixed use projects, virtually all of which were redevelopment of existing sites. She said that she welcomes them because they clean up stormwater problems in older urban sites. So you know, helping people kind of understand that, that reinvestment, which may in fact intensify the use on a property, also provides the capital to deal with stormwater problems that exist. So, so some education, I think, around that needs to happen. And then working with the property owners to think about the branding of East Milton. We, one of my staff just kind of wandered around East Milton one day and went into shops and whoever and just talked to people and just tried to find out with the perspective of businesses, which, which isn't necessarily the same as a perspective of, say, a chamber of commerce. Not that they're in conflict, but you just hear different things when you talk to the business owners. It might make sense in that area to think about how the town might support the formation of a business improvement district. The Massachusetts bid law is not great. It has some issues, but, but it does exist and there are bids around the state. And I'm sure you're probably all familiar with what that means, but if you're not, a business improvement district is a way for, for businesses in a defined business district to collaborate around essentially having a surcharge, if you will, added to their taxes, which the town collects and then turns back over to the business district, which is organized around a nonprofit that the businesses form. And the funding can be used for public realm improvements, for parking improvements, for, for any marketing, you know, any number of things. It seems like kind of part of a larger sort of branding effort from those businesses might be enhanced with a bid. And then also kind of strengthening maybe the business association of the businesses that are actually right in East Milton. It seemed to us from the conversations we had with them that that might be an appropriate thing to consider. And then also just signage, wayfinding around the area. So, so those were kinds of, you know, physical public realm improvements and the ways the businesses could participate in those that seemed important to us as we talked to them. And this is just another kind of chart from the report around kind of what are the purposes of these three sub-districts that we imagined? And a little bit of a window into what some of the dimensional requirements might be. So for example, in your current business district, you allow 45 feet or 65 feet by special permit. You know, what we're saying is in mixed use center, that should be, you know, 20 to 60 feet. And then, but you also need some other standards like a minimum height on the ground floor, minimum heights for the upper stories. Thinking about the use of upper story setbacks to mitigate the sense of height from the street, from the pedestrian perspective. And requirements around pedestrian oriented improvements at the front of the building. I mean, these are all things that, that sort of begin to step into, I guess, what I call a form-based code approach, but, but these are the kinds of things you can do with your zoning that would really result in a very different kind of experience beyond just updating the zoning for the business district that you have today. And again, looking at the parking requirements, we, we would suggest frankly, for, for non-residential uses, eliminating them entirely. But if you can't do that, then at least, you know, think about really reducing them and providing opportunities for commercial property owners to comply in ways other than providing onsite parking. Ultimately, you know, even thinking about something like the municipality supporting the construction of a parking structure, but with liner, you know, liner building around it so that people aren't just looking at a parking garage, but actually have additional business uses in that building would be something to consider. So this is just kind of an overview of the ideas that are in the report. I'm happy to kind of delve into any of these for you, but again, knowing that you had read the whole thing, I didn't want to go through 65 slides. So happy to answer any questions.
So thank you, Judy. This report is on the planning department's website for anybody who would like to take a look at the full report. And the presentation that Barrett Planning Group gave to was on January 21st, and that is recorded and on Milton Access TV for anybody who would like to see that. But let's open it up to the board. Do we have questions? Go ahead, Danny.
Well, thank you. I was wondering, the gateway district, does that currently include houses? Are those people's homes or the?
Some of it's residential.
Some of it's residential. And did, did the citizens that, that live in those areas participate at all?
I honestly can't tell you where all those people live. I certainly don't remember right now.
Okay. And then the, the transitional sub-district, is that currently zoned residential or is that zoned business?
It is mostly, mostly residential.
So it's zoned residential, but you're saying that there's already some, some business in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
You can see on this slide where the business uses encroach into the residential zone.
And that's the blue?
Yeah, the map on the, on the right, or my, looking at it.
So the, the blue and the orange already has some, some business in it. So.
This is other than traditional residential development, yes. The point is that you have uses that don't conform.
And where is the gateway? Where's the gateway? That's the brown.
It's long here. I'm sorry if the colors are just, are difficult to discern. This is gateway. This is transitional, which is a pretty typical approach around a more concentrated business area.
And, and what, what would happen if the, if you went in a little bit of a different direction and you said, okay, we're gonna create something that's four stories, well, three stories facing neighborhoods, but you'll go up to four stories in the center or in the business areas.
Well, it's a good question. We did a lot of just canvassing of the Boston area, like right around where you guys are to see what's happening in the market. And we certainly found some examples of three-story, four-story renovations. And if you don't require affordable housing, you might be able to make it work. It depends on the zoning. You know, it depends on a number of things, but you, you can sometimes make that work. The question that we continue to wrestle with throughout this project and that you guys are going to have to wrestle with is what are the trade-offs? People say they want affordable housing because it matters. People say they want public realm improvements. People say they want amenities. You don't get that from three-story renovations. So that's, I think.
Well, we also don't have three stories to be renovated, you know, that's the other issue. In, in most of those properties that you've looked at, you know, that I've worked on, you've worked on in Belmont or other kinds of places, there's an existing building that already has some height that you are then redoing and, and, and converting. This, this area doesn't have that. Most of the buildings are one stories and maybe two at the most. And so you're not rehabbing anything, you know, significant around here.
So you don't get amenities, you don't get affordable?
Not at the price per square foot, no.
Right. But what, what would you get? Would you still get housing, mixed use, mixed use housing? Or would you just get business?
I'm, I'm not sure you'd get any of that. I don't, I don't see it.
What I would say is that the existing properties have so many code deficiencies for renovation and it's why they sit the way they do.
Yeah.
Because if you want to do a certain level of work, it triggers code improvements and you can't get the money back out of it at that. It costs so much to renovate them. Improvements and you can't get the money back out of it at that. It costs so much to renovate them. For an increase of rent, that's not sufficient enough to cover that expense. And that's why they're underperforming. That's just my view.
No, I think you have a valid point.
And I understand about the cost just from my work as an architect and what the code requirements are. And then I think, you know, otherwise, I think. The other aspect of it is, you know, certain things trigger zoning compliance and we just, things can't, you can't meet the parking requirements.
Right.
And so it it there's just no, and this is one of the reasons why we embarked on this study some time ago. And it's certainly something that I became pretty familiar with when looking at Milton Village. Understanding what was happening there and what the improvement. And zoning could do to help unlock potential, if you will. That's the way I'd like to look at it.
Yeah.
Because I I think Judy, you hit it in your report, the potential is there. I mean, the market is there. Milton has a population that is ready. For certain amenities and certainly the need for additional kinds of housing. So what are the conditions that would allow that to happen, right? What are the conditions that would unlock it? I think the report, sorry, Danny, did you have others that you other questions you wanted to ask before I jump in there?
You can go ahead. I'll come back after.
Okay, I mean, I I'm really pleased with the report and the work, Judy, you know. This initiative, you know, was something that the residents in East Milton asked the planning board to embark on a couple of years ago. And, you know, it's recommended in the master plan to do these studies in our in our business districts. And we, you know, we had success doing that in Milton Village and we're, we really wanted to address East Milton. East Milton's larger. It has a few more complex issues. And I think you really dealt with those issues and I'm pleased about that because they're challenging issues. They really are. There's not an easy solution, which I think, you know, you're clear about. And one of the things that I would say is that the this information needs to go beyond the planning board. This information needs to go to the select board. It needs to go to neighborhood associations, to the chamber. You mentioned master plan and implementation committee and the Affordable Housing Trust. I think those are great, too. But like on the parking side, you know, like on the enforcement and on shared parking and whether there's public investment in parking. That's beyond zoning and that's beyond planning board. So I I do think we need a larger conversation and I think you've set that up in here. And so I I'd like for us to sort of discuss as a board how we plan to move forward on on that broader discussion. I did want to ask you, when you mentioned. You know, not being a fan of overlays, you know, we we have the business zoning and it. It's kind of blanket, right, across some different areas, which are actually kind of different. So if we change, we have to like strike the business zoning for me. Milton is basically what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. And, you know, you can have a district that contains sub districts. We do this with overlays. You can do it with base, you know, use districts. I think it's just that there's, it's a whole planning area. So it's a planning area and it isn't uniform. But it's it's related. The transitional area informs what happens or should inform what happens within the core. So. We look at it as a planning area and how does the zoning and the regulatory regulatory framework need to work? In that planning area.
So does it become a district with sub districts within that planning area?
Yeah, it could be. It could be.
And then on the. On the building and site standards and the form the form based codes. It was kind of interesting, you know, we went, we tried to go as far as we could with Milton Village with standards. And you may know that we're we're trying to move forward on design guidelines there because that was one of the things that many people were concerned about. Particularly with historic properties that are there. So what's your sense about how far, like one of the things in conversations that I've had. With Tim about the design. Guidelines is having them be very graphic in nature, kind of demonstrating. Kind of examples of what's meant by the language. So I'm just kind of curious what your thoughts are when you say. That we we need building and site standards for East Milton and would it be? Similar to Milton Village, something where do you have totally different idea? Can you just expand on that a little bit?
Sure. So I I'm not sure where you are with some of that on on Milton Village, but. You know, the I think the most successful ones I've seen. Steer clear of trying to draw a picture. Of what's going to be built. Because people then have these expectations that, oh, well, the building that's going to go on that lot is going to look exactly like X. And then when it doesn't, they freak out. So I think that form, you know, blocks like just. Here's here are principles and you illustrate that with, you know, in SketchUp with with more, I think, you know, basic forms. Really kind of forces people to understand there's a concept behind this. And we're not going to argue about whether it's, you know, what kind of roof it is, if you will. I mean, we're not going to argue about what the architectural style is. We're going to talk about massing. We're going to talk about form.
Right.
I I just think that's better, but.
Okay. And so as far as like. Like one way to view them as a guide for the reviewing body, like the planning board. You know, there's recommendation in the master plan also of establishing a design review committee.
Yep.
Which might be composed of architects, landscape architects, other design professionals. But until that happens, these are kind of the guide for the planning board in the sense of Milton Village, right?
Yeah. And your and your applicants.
And the that's the next part, right? And the applicants to know what we're looking for, right? Okay. So maybe a separate conversation you can have with Tim about any firms that you could recommend or suggest who might be able to help with the design guidelines. That would be helpful. All right. All right. So that's, I think that's it for me for right now.
Great.
Thank you.
I know, Danny, I think you had some more comments. Do you want to go now or do we want to hear from Kathleen and Rich? I just want to make sure that they have a chance to.
Yeah, I I'm happy to go after they go. I'm happy to keep listening.
Kathleen, Judy, just for your reference, our two of our members live in East Milton, so I think they'll have an interest respect.
Understood. No, I know they do. Thank you.
Well, Mitch participated, right?
Yeah.
Yep. Richard, Kathleen, do you have anything you want to add or any questions for Judy?
Let Rich go.
No, I I don't right now. I I'm I'm more listening. I don't. I don't know that I have a comment right now.
Okay. Kathleen, are you all set?
No, I started just had a thought, Judy, that, you know, we have this housing choice, you know, bill, which gets passed and changes the quantum of vote for us to. Approve multifamily housing and that sort of thing from two thirds down to a majority. And we also have this MBTA community requirements. And I know that DHCD hasn't issued any guidelines for that. And I also know that East Milton doesn't count. As a sort of transit oriented location because all we have are two buses and and the and the expressway. But I'm wondering if you've heard any sort of rumors about whether or not DHCD would sort of consider. In a situation like Milton where we don't really have that many sites that are near the transit, we have Milton Village, which is one spot. But whether they're sort of going to take a broader view that if you put the proposed housing in multifamily housing by right. Multi use housing in by right in a certain district that's a business district, but not necessarily on the MBTA line, whether. They would sort of consider that kind of as a substitute for what is required under that MBTA.
We're we're not sure, Kathleen. I think it's really hard. To tell how the guidance is going to roll out. It appears that they're kind of. Issuing responses to questions as they come up, but.
Yeah.
I'm I'm reluctant to say anything about the housing choice bill for reasons you can probably understand. There's just a lot of unanswered questions about it.
Yeah, yeah. I just was thinking, you know, as I said, because this, you know, this is a perfect location for that kind of idea. Except that it's not near any, it's not near a transit station, so.
Right. Well, I mean, you can always do a forty, something like a chapter forty R district there.
Oh, yeah.
Chapter forty R district doesn't need to be right next to transit, but.
Right. No, I've been pushing a forty R for this area for years. I mean, like seriously, since I was on the committee drafting the regs.
Yeah, and you could, I mean, but you could. Before there was forty R, we still had forty A and we still could do districts like that, you know. So I would just say housing choice is an opportunity, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't wait on it.
Yeah.
My view.
Yeah.
Just so the board knows, I have another meeting tonight, so what I'd like.
Yes, I know. You have to go.
I'm sorry, and I don't mean to do this to you, but I'm actually getting pounded by. Other folks. I'm just wondering if you have other questions. I'd like to be able to respond to them before I have to say I'm gonna go.
Andy, did you have some questions left?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm happy to go after. I'm happy to go after Kathleen's for wrap up.
Done.
Okay. I'd be interested to hear your your thoughts on this. Judy, I've I've listened to citizens from East Milton for years now. And my sense from the discussions that I've found myself in is that. The citizens who live over in that area, especially close to it. They like amenities. Everyone does like amenities. But the the strength of feelings on how much they like amenities pales in comparison to how much they. Don't like five or six stories. Yeah, that was your vibe, too. Okay.
Well, I just, and I just want to be careful.
Yep.
We heard both, and I will say this. We had a little glass of cold water thrown on our face early on with this project when we were looking at demographic data and we thought we kind of had a handle on East Milton. And then we find out, we found out that actually the data are a little bit behind what's actually happening. And there are younger people moving into East Milton who may not be at the meetings you go to. Who may not be showing up at big public meetings. But when you ask them, kind of, what is your sense about East Milton? You will hear a different story. And that was part of the benefit of opening this committee up. Is that we heard things we did not hear before, and that's not a criticism of the original group. It's simply a recognition that when you open things up. You will start to hear from voices you didn't hear before. So I would simply encourage you, Danny, to think about. About you've got a changing neighborhood here. You do. And not everybody agrees with the voices that may be the most potent.
So I had asked if if you did three to four stories. And you said you don't get amenities, you don't get affordable. If you do four stories. In this sort of a district, you still don't get amenities, you don't get affordable.
I I can't. It's so site specific. It's hard to answer that question.
Well, I was just trying to understand.
Big investment. You won't get significant investment in public improvements because the money isn't there to do it.
Okay.
It takes capital to make those things happen. And when you're, when everything you've got is going into just fixing the building, you're not going to be. You're not going to be doing improvements outside the building that contribute to an improved public realm. You just can't do it. So my comment is if the town wants to spend that money, if you want to go to town meeting and ask for the money it takes to clean up the sidewalks and and do streetscape improvements in East Milton. So that nobody ever has to look at anything that's more than four stories tall. I mean, that's a choice the town has, but I don't think the town's going to do that. And it doesn't solve your affordable housing problem.
So that's interesting. I I didn't, okay, that's interesting. Well, thank you for all the time you put into this.
Thank you. It was fun.
Judy, I.
Okay, thank you, Judy.
If you're done, Danny, I'll just say Judy, thank you very much for your report. As you know, from knowing me for a long time, you're speaking a lot of my language here. And just one note about the streetscape improvements. That's something a bid could do as well. I do question sort of the. The ability of East Milton in its current form to pull a bid together. While we do have fewer landowners than you might typically find.
Right.
Area like that. I just don't know the stability of the businesses that are there. So that gives me a little bit of a pause, but it would be a great thing if we could, if we could somehow find a way to pull it off. Because that would create some resources, too. I agree with you entirely on the marketing and the branding and the creating a sense of place. Because in the square right now, it just sort of, as you said, organically grew that way and you can tell it doesn't, you know, there was a reason.
It's funky.
Came to be.
Funky.
So I think, you know, there's a lot of value in in what you have put together here. We certainly appreciate the time and thank you very much for. Adapting when the committee got expanded and I know that not everybody agreed with that decision, but I.
It worked out. It was fine. And, you know, to Cheryl, who was chair when we started. You know, thank you for your moral support, getting through those those first couple of, you know, big public meetings. It was tough. And and thank you for giving us the opportunity to do this because. You know, we enjoyed it. Dodson and Clinker is just a fabulous partner on these things and and I I'm I'm I hope that you're able to take this and move forward. That's our hope.
Yeah. And I think you've brought up a lot of important points, like the economics of development, where sometimes the. What people see in their heads isn't always what's possible and it's sometimes a hard reality to swallow, but we have to make choices based on reality. So that was, there was a lot of value in that, too. So I don't know where we're going to go with this from here, but I do. Expect that there'll be a lot more communication about it and conversation about it, and this is going to be a really valuable tool for the town. So thank you so much for your time. Good luck with your next meeting.
Thanks, Judy. As a resident of East Milton for thirty years, I appreciate your work. I really do.
All right. Have a good meeting, guys. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay, so now we are moving into executive session. And what I will do, I'm going to make the motion, which I don't typically do, but if someone could second it. I move pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty One, Subsection A three, sometimes called Purpose Three. That the planning board enter into executive session to discuss litigation strategy with respect to Joe Henning. At L versus Milton Planning Board at L sixteen M I S C O O O four two one D R R Land Court. Based on my belief that having these discussions in open session will have a detrimental effect. On the litigation position of the planning board. Do we have a second?
Second.
And then we have to take a roll call vote to go into executive session.
Don't we also have to say that we're coming out of executive?
We are, yes. Oh, I should say, yes, we, I think we probably have to take a roll call vote just to. Do we have to take a roll call vote to pause our other meeting? I don't know.
No, we're still in the same, we're in the same meeting, but we're going into.
To take a roll call vote to go into executive session and we will be returning to our public meeting. At the conclusion of executive session. I see Kevin Freitag shaking his head, so that is. Let's, did we get a second?
Yes.
Kathleen.
Okay. Roll call vote. Kathleen O'Donnell.
Yes.
April Anderson, yes. Dennis Swenson?
Yes.
Carol Taggias?
Yes.
Rich Beeler?
Yes.
Okay. Now I think we need Milton Access TV to pause us while we go into executive session from our live broadcast.
Do we also need to ask the attendees to go into some kind of waiting room?
I can, I can, I can lock the webinar. And I'll ask our our gracious Milton webinar host to confirm this for me. If if we lock the webinar and stop recording, we should be okay for executive session. That's what Hillary kind of walked me through earlier. Yes, for select board, basically what will happen is I'll have to host Tim. I'll make him the primary owner. I'll turn off all video recording and audio and then leave the meeting. The problem is, I think you'd probably have to text Mike, Tim, in order to inform me when to come back. I do not have his phone number. Could, would you be able to, or do you have access to email right now? Would you be able to email me his phone number?
I can, yeah, let me try and. I know this, this takes a couple of minutes, but I could actually call him and then confirm it for you.
I may have it. Let me see.
I really did ask how to do this earlier and I thought I had all my ducks in a row. I apologize, everybody.
That's okay. We've all been there.
Sorry, I'm not coming upon it quickly, so do whatever you need to do.
I mean, let me, let me, let me turn off the audio first and do this. One second.